Dennis, Dennis, make sure the lobby's on. That calls on. I am going to say that we are live.
Are they going first for four outstanding?
You alright, sir?
Good, I am.
Did everybody get one of these?
But I don't think we're here.
I know.
Good evening and welcome to the Pasco County School Board. Now would be the appropriate time to check your cellphone and all other devices and make sure that they are on silent mode and as I will do mine right now. And our vision statement is all our students achieve success in college career and life and our thought for the day is Megan Harding.
It's a little bit long, so bear with me. In so many ways, 2020 has likely been the hardest year in our lives for all of us. The difficult challenges for most Americans have been daunting, but there's nothing like gratitude to change your attitude. So with the holiday season upon us, I thought I would share what I'm grateful for today. I'm grateful for our teachers and staff who work day in and day out to ensure our students' need, needs are not only taken care of academically, but also emotionally. Sometimes working 12 to 14 hour days, our teachers have stepped up to the plate and have ensured that we have, we have had a successful first semester. I'm grateful for our custodians, place workers, and for FNS for all the hard work they have put in this year to also support our students and their families. I'm grateful for our community and our parents and guardians who have helped us ensure success and have supported our teacher staff in our district. After all, teamwork makes the dream work. I'm grateful for our school board and the superintendent for their leadership and for making hard decisions in order to ensure our students are safe and learning. I'm grateful for our healthcare workers who have been on the front lines battling COVID-19. And finally today, I'm grateful that every day is a new day to make a difference in someone's life. Although there are so many more things I'm grateful for, this is just a snippet. And I challenge you to also reflect on the many happy things 2020 has brought even when it feels like it hasn't because when you look around, it really has brought so many blessings. And with that, Merry Christmas and I wish everyone a blessed, healthy, and Happy New Year.
Ms. Harding, that is a tremendous thought for our last meeting of the year and I thank you for that.
Thanks.
If you would stand, join us in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record reflect that all board members are present tonight with the exception of Ms. Armstrong who has an excused absence and the superintendent and attorney are with us. And I would ask that you would take a moment of silence to remember those that are battling tonight and for those, give thanks for those who have been spared. Thank you. Board members, we were provided the minutes of the meeting from December 1st and I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Harding, second by both one. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have no public hearings tonight. We do have some special presentations, Mr. Hagerty.
Good evening, honorable board members, Superintendent Browning and Attorney Alfonso. Each year, our high schools select a senior to represent their school. The students are vetted by the student body, faculty, administration, and are nominated on the basis of outstanding scholarship, leadership, service, and citizenship. Here to describe the selection process in more detail and to introduce this year's outstanding senior is Wendy Beard, Program Coordinator in the Office of Career, Technical, and Adult Education.
Good evening. A committee interviewed all of our nominees. This year, the committee was comprised of the following. Chiquita Henderson, Dean of Student Affairs and Title IX Coordinator, Pasco Hernando State College. Ms. Clara Capote, Academic Advisor, Pasco Hernando State College. Jackie Dayner, Communication and Grants Manager, Pasco Education Foundation. And Wendy Beard, who would be me. We thank the Pasco Education Foundation for their support of the $1,000 scholarship to the outstanding, the outstanding senior we received. This year, the committee selected Mariano D. Carvalho of Wendell Crin Technical High School as Pasco County Schools Outstanding Senior. This is Mariano.
Hi.
As stated earlier, the Outstanding Senior is nominated on the basis of outstanding scholarship, leadership, service, and citizenship. Allow me to highlight Mariano's accomplishment in each of these areas. Scholarship. Throughout high school, Mariano has been incredibly involved academically. He has taken honors and other advanced courses since his freshman year and will graduate having completed over 15 dual enrollment courses at Pasco Hernando State College. He has well maintained over a 4.0 GPA as well despite personal challenges. He takes his classes very seriously and strives to absorb as much information as he can every day. Leadership. Mariano has always made leadership a priority. When he began at Wendell Crin as a sophomore, he immediately became involved in leading his class in most aspects. He joined his school's student council and has since been elected president. He is adamant that every member of his cohort succeeds. Service. Service and giving back to community has always been something close to Mariano's heart, especially since he's received so much help from those around him. He uses his time outside of school to volunteer through the National Honor Society, Interact Club, and Special Olympics. Since his junior year, he is elected to volunteer to these organizations, not for the hours, but for the fulfillment of giving back. Citizenship. Mariano is incredibly active in his school and local community. Since Wendell Crin was a brand-new school, it took lots of engagement efforts with his peers to create a brand-new environment with many new faces. Integration and involvement were crucial, so it was important to him that he be active in creating school events, organizations, and cooperation with local business partners. Mariano's contributions have benefited the school greatly. Again, congratulations, Mariano. A big shout out to you to come forth from the Pasco Education Foundation.
I'm so honored to be here with this plaque for your outstanding accomplishments and this is information about your scholarship that you will receive. I want you to congratulate them.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You want Mariano's family to stand, please? And he just tells them who's here.
Hi. So this is my little brother Anderson. He's a sophomore at River Ridge. This is my older brother Cristiano and my grandma Edith.
Thank you all for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, young man. If you'll hang around afterwards, there'll be some photos, okay?
Thank you.
Your family. Thank you all so much and thank you for the support. Mr. Hagerty, next one?
This evening, we announced the winners of the 8th Annual Clerk and Controller's Office Constitution Essay Contest. As Pasco County's Clerk and Controller, Nikki Alvarez-Souls oversees an agency of nearly 300 charged with carrying out roughly 1,000 duties for the citizens of Pasco County. She is with us this evening to present the top three essayists, and I believe that one of the winners will read her essay for us, I believe. Yeah?
Good evening. I am so honored to be here to celebrate our 5th graders here in Pasco County. And as it was announced, this is our 8th Annual Clerk and Controller Constitutional Essay Contest for Pasco County 5th graders. The question that they answered in their essay is why is the U.S. Constitution important? And our office has a keen interest not only in the philosophy behind the country's founding documents, but its practical workings as well. Our office is involved with all three branches of government. So the separation of powers that keeps every branch of government in check and subject to the will of we, the people, which applies to local governments as well. In Florida, the functions of the Clerk and Controller is to serve as the county recorder, maintaining the official records of the county; the county comptroller, managing and auditing the county's investments, bank accounts, and payments; and the clerk of the circuit court, working hand-in-hand with other justice partners. Our role in keeping these functions separated but operating smoothly makes all of us in our office aware of the importance of balancing the powers established by our founders. Through this contest, the Constitutional Essay Contest, we hope to encourage Pasco students to learn at an early age about the wisdom beyond the preamble. So we had judges who are all professional writers and editors, and they remarked about the overall quality of all the essays that were presented today, or presented this year. So we have the top three winners. All were amazing, but we have the top three winners here tonight to recognize them for their accomplishments. So in third place was Bethany Fishahay from Oakstead Elementary. If, Bethany, if you could come up, please? I'm going to read a small excerpt from her essay. She said, "One reason why the U.S. Constitution is important to me is because of the 19th Amendment. It allows women to vote. Being able to vote is an important right of all citizens, not just women." So I would like to give you a couple of things, Bethany. If you would.
Bethany?
Thank you. Gift cards for your hard work. And if you don't mind, I do have a bronze medal for you. Can I put it around you? Okay, we'll hold it if you want. Don't want to mess up the hair. And also a beautiful trophy to put on your shelf. Thank you, Bethany. Congratulations, Bethany. So our second place winner is also from Oakstead Elementary, Derek Nodler. If you would please come up, Derek. So a short excerpt from Mr. Nodler's, is that right? Essay is, "The U.S. Constitution is one of the most important documents in American history. It is the building blocks of our governmental system and creates checks and balances to ensure that no one has too much power." That is right. So congratulations. I also have some gifts for you. You're welcome. I'm going to try to, this is a silver medal. And on the back of it has your name. Here is your gift card. Thank you. Good job. Great job. Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, so for our first place winner, we have from Bexley Elementary, Lucy Butler. Lucy, could you please come up? Now, if it pleases the board, I offered, if it's okay with you, for Bethany to read her essay. She describes how a current day pop culture phenomenon inspired her to learn more about our constitution. So if it's all right? Of course. She's a great presenter, by the way.
Hamilton is my favorite musical, but before I was introduced to it, I really didn't think about the U.S. Constitution. I didn't know how important it was, so I started researching. I learned the Constitution created the government as we know it, and it gave us our first set of laws for our society. Our government has three branches, the legislative, the judicial, and the executive. They all work together to make sure our country operates and functions correctly. The legislative branch makes the laws, the judicial branch makes sure the laws follow the rules of the Constitution, and the executive branch enforces the laws. This process is called checks and balances. The U.S. Constitution protects the rights of the American citizens in our country. The government does not hold us back from being free. We can say or write what we want unless it's plagiarism. We can choose our religion, and we can protest things that aren't fair. The Constitution also gives us the right to vote, but you have to be 18 or older and registered. Alexander Hamilton was a defender of the Constitution. Along with founding fathers James Madison and John Jay, they wrote the Federalist Papers to help people understand the Constitution better and why they should, they should support it. Even though that was more than 230 years ago, the Constitution is still very important today. This year is an election year, and with COVID-19 happening as well, citizens need to vote for the good of the U.S. Hamilton and our founding fathers worked so hard to create the Constitution and to make sure our country lived on after them. Now is time for us to do our part.
So on behalf of the superintendent and board, I want to congratulate all of you all. Thank you again to the clerk's office and their team and judges for doing that. We look forward to it every year, and we're always amazed at the talent that we have that writes. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
So if you all would, we're going to take a very quick break to go outside this door and take photos. Ms. Harding?
I'll give them to Alan.
What?
Good job, Lucy. Thank you. I was trying to. Great.
We on?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you for that indulgence. We move to agenda item number five, public comment, and I'll turn it over to our attorney. Also know that these rules apply for off-agenda items at the end of the meeting also.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the opportunity for the public to be heard on items that are appearing on the agenda tonight for action. To speak at this time, you should have already completed one of the speaker request cards, given your name to a staff member that you can see in the lobby. If you have any materials that you wish to share with the board, please email them to the board following the meeting for distribution among board members. Each statement made by a member of the public shall be limited to three minutes in duration and only once per meeting. I will serve as the timekeeper. You'll see a timekeeper mechanism on the podium. Speakers will be called to come forward by the chair. Prior to making your remarks, please state your name and address for the record. All speakers and comments are subject to applicable school board policies regarding civility and decorum. Thank you.
Thank you. So, the only speaker I have for an agenda item is Caitlin Almatawa. Did I say that halfway right? Caitlin?
Is there anybody in the overflow?
In the overflow room? We'll give them a minute to walk down here. Can you see somebody coming?
I did see somebody walk, but I don't know if it's...
Somebody went to tell them they can come down.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I can see.
She was in the overflow room.
Okay. Thank you. So, are you Caitlin?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, Caitlin, I need the full address, please. It wasn't on the card.
Oh, I put it on the card. It's 1-5-4-3-2, East Ponwoods Drive.
Yeah. What town?
Tampa, Florida.
Tampa. Okay, that's what we needed. Thank you.
Got it. I apologize.
So, did you hear the attorney with the instructions?
Partially. We did leave the room in the middle of it.
Okay. So, basically, you're going to be nice so we don't have to worry about the rest of it. So, just three minutes, and he's the timekeeper, and the light's on the thing. So, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So, my name is Caitlin Almatawa. I am a speech-language pathologist at Veterans Elementary. I want to start by affirming everyone's commitment to the safety of our children. I know that none of us would be here if we did not care deeply about them. I also want to thank the board and the sheriff's office for explicitly outlining the very specific role that school guardians have in our schools. The agreement appears to stay true to the Florida law, to the intent of the Florida law, that was passed after the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas tragedy, that authorized measures to protect our children from imminent mass violence. This is the very law that the sheriff's office cites when defending the use of protected school data to label children as destined to a life of crime. That is not the intention of the law. I wanted to address, I had other comments prepared, but I did see the sheriff's office post today on Facebook, and I wanted to address some of the statements there. I'm not here today to call into question whether the sheriff's office has a legitimate role in our schools. I'm here asking for transparency and accountability. The sheriff's office states that this program was developed in response to the tragedy that happened in Parkland, but what they failed to admit is that the manual was actually published a month prior to that tragedy. The sheriff's office states that this data is used to identify kids at risk of substance abuse, victimization, and mental health concerns, among other issues. But what they don't admit is that school resource officers are not trained to provide evidence-based mental health or substance abuse services. The sheriff's office states that this program is not about designating students as at risk of becoming future criminals, but what they fail to admit is that their manual states that the children included on this list are destined to a life of crime. Now, moving on to the district's response. It is very concerning to me that when informed of the existence of this list, district leadership stated that they were unaware of its existence, and instead of committing to find out more, Superintendent Browning and multiple board members made it clear that they have blind trust that everything is on the up and up. Additionally, the sheriff's office stated that the data that was shared does not include demographic information such as race or age, and their intention was to make the point that they do not target specific groups of kids. But this is ignoring the actual concerns that we have as community members. We demand demographic data to be released because if it comes to light that Black and Brown students and students with disabilities are overrepresented on this list, it is evidence that we, as a district, are in fact failing these children. We are asking that the district prioritize care and prevention for these students. Invest in our children and our community. And before I'm done, I do want to acknowledge our school guardian at Veterans Elementary, Damon Wallace. He is wonderful. He's a very kind and compassionate member of our school community, and we're happy to have him there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is anyone here from UCF tonight?
Yeah, I saw.
Eric, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Jeff Larson, speaking on behalf of the United School Employees of Pasco. Good evening, superintendent, board members, staff. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. As we scratch and claw our way toward the end of this crazy 2020, I'm happy to share some updates from our end as it relates to bargaining. At this point, nearly all of the MOUs and language issues have been addressed and signed, and we have held several substantive conversations with staff, including today, regarding economics and the categorical funding that the state has imposed on districts. We do appreciate that the district is trying to make it a priority to find additional funding above and beyond the state funding in order to help support our instructional and SRP staff across the district. We look forward to hopefully being able to finalize things shortly after break. On behalf of USCP and President Don Peace, we hope everybody has a wonderful, well-deserved, safe, socially-distanced break. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member committee reports. Ms. Crumley, you have any?
No committee reports, no at this time.
Ms. Harding?
I had none.
Ms. Bogman?
I did. At a student progression plan committee meeting, it was actually just our subcommittee, which I'm on the assessment subcommittee, and we made some recommendations to clarify language for consistency and clarity, and also to align with the state statute. For example, as you know, students can use a concordant score on the geometry EOC to meet the algebra EOC requirement now. This was extended beyond last year, cancellations due to COVID. So, that's where we are right now. That's it for us. Thank you.
All right. And I had an insurance committee meeting. I wanted to let the board and also the public know that so far, we have spent over $2.1 million in additional healthcare costs as a result of COVID, including testing and treatment and stuff. So, that generally is an indicator of above-average cost and may need to be reflected in conversations and discussions as we go forward on the health plan. But they've done a great job. The testing centers are working amazing, and everyone's been very cooperative, and it was a great team meeting with a lot of people pitching in. But I did want you all to know that number as we prepare after the first year and start working on budget. So, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The only thing I was thinking about is, in every meeting that we have over the last couple of months, it's been about, we always come back to this thing about making sure that folks are taking advantage of breaks and getting rest and taking care of themselves. And I so much appreciate Mrs. Harding's thought for the day about all the things that we are grateful for and all the things that we are thankful for. We have a great district with a lot of great things going on, and I will tell you that, and I've said this over and over again, it could not happen were it not for our folks across this district that work tirelessly to make sure that it does happen in these adverse times that we live in. I'm hopeful that our teachers and our staff, both district and school base, will get rest. We need rest. We need to take care of ourselves and take advantage of the coming two weeks that we will have to rest. It sounds kind of a mundane thing to talk about, but it is important. I think my staff will attest that I always talk about making sure that we take care of ourselves. You're no good to me sick. I say that, and I mean that with all the love in my heart. But I do, I do trust that everyone has a great Christmas break, a great New Year, and I am certainly hopeful and prayerful that '21 proves to be better than '20 has been. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Gad?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shibley.
Just very quickly this evening, there is an addendum to item 10.1 that has been uploaded into Board Docs, and I also wanted just to let the board members know that we will also be having the COVID testing over the winter break, similar to what we did with Thanksgiving, and we actually participated in a conference call with the Department of Health and have started coordinating with MyHealthOnSite about the potential of being a closed pod distributor of the vaccine once it becomes available for school employees. So, that work is starting, but details are somewhat limited on when we will get access and what that will look like, but we're starting planning the best that we can.
That was a question I had for later, so thank you for covering that. Mrs. Kuhn?
Happy holidays.
Well, thank you. Dr. Moore?
Good evening, board members. As we prepare for our winter break, I want to thank our teachers, staff, and administrators for their dedication to our students. Although this semester has been unlike no other time, our teachers, staff, and administrators have risen to the task, and as Ms. Harding said, we need to be grateful for their hard work. So, we wanted to say thank you. I have a couple of exciting things to share. First and foremost, I'm excited to announce our first CTE teacher newsletter called The Download. This was published, it was published this week in the Office of Leading and Learning Electronic Communications for December. The purpose of this newsletter is a bit different from our connector that Pam Willoughby does. This is for our teachers as a communication tool between our office regarding program updates and other important information that is only for CTE teachers. So, our CTEAE team is also working to create a new newsletter that will provide specific supports to our adult education teachers. So, we're trying to make sure that we provide support to all of our wonderful teachers and help them continue to support our students. I have two highlights from our health science career cluster. Our Wiregrass Ranch High School CNA students have started their clinical rotations. At Advent Health, Zephyr Hills started this week also. We want to thank PHSC because the Farm Tech donation that they said they were going to give to us has been approved by the board, and that donation will support our pharmacy program at Hudson High School. From Marchman, we have a couple of our great students that are going to be entering the workforce. So, two of our welding students were recently employed with the ironworkers in Tampa, starting at $26 an hour and receiving full benefits. Another one of our welding students was hired by Pipe Fitters at $23 an hour to include benefits and a pension. So, we are very excited about our students and them becoming contributing members of society. Also, we want to let you know that this is based upon a program that's only been in existence for three years and the impact that we're having. And because this program has done such a great job, Marchman will be working to expand the welding program to double the capacity of the program thanks to the state's Rapid Credential Grant. So, we are projected to start the expanded program in January of 2021. And also from Marchman, we have nine new members to the National Technical Honor Society, and we will be notifying 15 inductees this week of their induction into the National Adult Education Honor Society. So, very excited to close out the first semester in this calendar year. On the positive note, thank you very much. Have a blessed holiday and a happy New Year.
Thank you so very much. Mrs. Hilton?
Good evening, everybody. I wanted to let you know that today, we submitted our Spring '21 Education Plan and Assurances to the State outlining our plans for a successful semester, too. I want to extend my thanks to directors, department staff, school leaders who helped us with the research, thinking, and planning needed. I will be sending the plan to you that we submitted later tonight, and you will see that it includes enhanced outreach to students who may not have shown up in our system yet, communications to families of students in my school online and e-school indicating who is making progress and who is not, as well as an acknowledgement of families who do not want their students, who may be struggling, to return to our traditional model, an intervention plan for students who are not making progress, both in person and virtually, and a professional learning plan to ensure our teachers and leaders have the knowledge needed to do their very best work. Just a note that while the plan does require us to outline those specific items, I want to assure you that our schools and our leaders were very much already up to much of that work, communicating with families, encouraging students who may have been struggling to come back to the traditional model, as well as ensuring that there are systems of support set up for students who are struggling. We will also be bringing specifics to you for approval in January regarding supports for students in extended school day and later extended school year as a means to mitigate learning loss and prevent achievement gaps this year. Additionally, our Head Start program is undergoing a focus area review with the Office of Head Start this week. I know that department is working hard to showcase our incredible programs for our youngest learners, and we thank you for your support with that. I also want to be sure to remind you that we're moving forward with our English Language Arts Instructional Materials Review Process. Our narrowing group worked extremely hard over many nights and hours to build their knowledge and review products this fall, and now they've elevated two to three products at each level for school review. This week, yesterday, tomorrow, Thursday, started our Train the Trainer series on these materials that will be tried out in schools when we return from break. I appreciate, again, all the countless hours of the Office for Leading and Learning Staff, as well as teachers and leaders on our narrowing team who dedicated a lot of after-hours time, who've already made this, due to their commitment, already made this a very meaningful experience for our district. You may already know that Computer Science Education Week was last week, and a few meetings ago, I shared with you the great work of the Office for Leading and Learning and Bobby Starling related to expanding offerings for our students, as well as building teacher expertise in our district around computer science. Our celebration of Computer Science Week was highlighted on the State Department of Education website for all other districts to admire, including our Did You Know? computer science facts that we share daily, the schools that were participating in the Hour of Code, and a link to an article published on computer science by our very own Wiregrass Ranch High School. Awesome to see the recognition of this great work in Pasco, and I hope that you are proud and thank you for your support with that.
Thank you, Ms. Hilton. Ms. Hexor-Nedels?
Good evening, board members. I also would like to echo the compliment to Ms. Harding in the thought for the evening with gratitude and echo it completely. So many wonderful things are happening, and there are so many things that we all have to be grateful for. Charles S. Roushi Middle School has an Animal Services Club, and I wanted to share with you that the students recently held a bracelet drive where they raised funds. They also put in sweat equity routinely, and the Friends of Animal Services have honored them with a permanent remembrance of a gold leaf and a very nice gold tree that is on the wall in the Animal Services Building. So, shout out to Charles S. Roushi's Animal Services Club. I wanted to publicly thank the Bullard Family Foundation again for their generous support of all of our staff at both Pasco Middle and Gulf Middle. You might remember at Thanksgiving time, they helped those families or those staff members out with turkeys and food, and they have graciously offered this again for the holiday time. And finally, I just want to thank you for your continuous support of our students, staff, and schools, and wish you all a very happy and healthy holiday and happy New Year.
Thank you. Mrs. Poe?
Good evening. I just learned of a fantastic community partner this week, and I wanted to be sure to share all about them. Heritage Pines Community Association, they are an active 55-plus community in the Spring Hill area. They have adopted two of our elementary schools, and it's not just this year. They've been doing this, but I just, it just was brought to my attention that they have adopted Mary Giella and Shady Hills Elementary Schools, and they truly provide wraparound services for them throughout the year. Supports thus far have included the donation of 300 backpacks stuffed full of school supplies, turkeys and all the sides for Thanksgiving for families in need, food and gifts for over 50 families at each school for Christmas, and handmade wool hats, mittens, scarves, and handmade wooden toys, books, and candy canes for all kindergarten and first graders. And that's at both schools. They've also donated 15 bikes between the two schools, and they provide food weekly to ensure the food pantry at Mary Giella is stocked full at all times to support those families in need. In addition to all of that, and this is where I was able to meet the organization leaders, they donated last week $4,000 to Mary Giella Elementary School, and it's to support the ongoing efforts of the school to celebrate their students and staff. So, truly, it was just handing that over to the principal to say, do whatever you need to with this money. All of this is a collective effort, of course, at Heritage Pines, but I had the pleasure of meeting the head elf, so to speak, and her name is Penny Norton. Penny has actually volunteered at Mary Giella for over 20 years. She even volunteered in the current principal, Ms. Bonnet's, classroom way back when, when she was a teacher at Mary Giella, so full circle. And I just wanted to provide a few quotes from the principals. So, to quote Shady Hills Principal Tom Barker, when referring to the Heritage Pines partnership, he says, "I've never known such a giving group of people. We could never thank them enough for all they lovingly do for our students." Principal Tracy Bonnet of Mary Giella adds in, "They're beyond amazing. We're truly blessed to have their support. And after meeting this lovely group of people from Heritage Pines, I couldn't agree more, and our schools are truly blessed to have their support." So, I just wanted to share that good news with all of you.
Thank you so much. They have done that for many, many years and have been extremely generous. So, Dr. Isles?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I would like to introduce Crystal Packard. If you could please stand. Tonight, in your agenda, we have made a recommendation to appoint Crystal as the Assistant Principal at Wiregrass Ranch High School. Also here tonight is Robin White to support this. Just to give you a little bit of information about Crystal, she's worked at all levels within our system, elementary, middle, and high. She's been a math coach, and she presently is the Learning Design Specialist at 5A High School. She has also been one of our admin interns for our system, which shows that that definitely does assist and support upcoming leaders. Additionally, Mr. Jones describes her as a taskmaster, an instructional leader, and someone who cares about children. So, we're pleased to bring this recommendation to you this evening. Additionally, in your packet, I've also brought forward a recommendation for Dr. Ishonda Swaggart. She couldn't be here this evening because of a family emergency, but it's for appointment as an Assistant Principal at Pasco High School. Just to give you a little bit about her background, she has experience working in reading and also with ESE students. She's also an adjunct professor at Pasco Hernando State College, and she's earned her doctorate in education and management. So, we're pleased to add her on to the administrative staff at Pasco. So, thank you very much, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Dr. Skanga? Thank you, sir. All right, board members, we move to the consent agenda. Is there any board member has anything to pull? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve?
And to add, who said that?
Ms. Bogman moved to...
It was hard to hear.
Oh, sorry. Move to approve the consent agenda and all addendum.
Okay, second.
All right. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. So, we move to miscellaneous action items. 15.1 Student Progression Plan. We've talked about this before. It's final approval, and I need a motion and a second.
I move to approve the student progression plan 2021.
Second.
Motion by Crumley, second by Harding. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Individual board member reports. We're going to start with Ms. Bogman.
Oh, got to switch it up.
Switching it up.
I attended some...
Keep y'all on your toes.
Yeah. I attended some of the FSBA sessions at the annual conference a couple weeks ago. I wanted to congratulate again Mariano DiCarvallo, who was recognized earlier this evening. I would also like to congratulate all the class of 2021 Seniors of the Year on their remarkable accomplishments. Additionally, congratulations to our three finalists for the school district's Annual Teacher of the Year. Wendell Crin Technical High School Language Arts Teacher Jamie Davanzo, San Antonio Elementary Art Teacher Craig Jacobowitz, and Seven Springs Middle Chinese Language Teacher Yan Li-Gasta. In addition to recognizing and thanking all three of these outstanding educators, I would like to congratulate all the school winners and thank all of our teachers and SRPs for all they do every day to serve our students and families. I would also like to wish all of our staff, our teachers, our students, our families a safe and restful holiday break, and I'm looking forward to 2021.
Ms. Harding?
Yes. I, too, got to attend the Florida School Board Association Annual Conference via Zoom. I was sad that we couldn't meet in person, but I was still really grateful that FSBA allowed that to happen, and I even won us a scholarship for one of our students. I came in second place, so woo-hoo, I'm excited about that. I also wanted to congratulate, I saw this on their Facebook, Hudson High School's Girls' Weightlifting Team for their great showing at their conference meet. I got to attend a little ribbon cutting at Day Spring Academy's Jazz Campus, and of course, I didn't hesitate when they asked me to slide down their new slide for their new playground. That was really fun. I also wanted to thank New Porridge Rotary for their continued support of our schools. They recently gave Gulf High School a generous donations to their athletic department, and I know that New Porridge Rotary is constantly supporting our schools, so I wanted to publicly thank them. Yesterday, I got the opportunity to go to Cruz Lake Middle School and got to listen to their band. They were running through songs that they would have been playing at their winter concert, so they decided to record it, and then they've been putting them in the cafeteria for their students during lunch to kind of listen to them. So, that was really awesome. So, I wanted to thank Mr. Rowan for inviting me, and if you guys... So I wanted to thank Mr. Rowan for inviting me, and if you guys haven't had an opportunity to hear Cruz Lake Middle, I highly suggest that you reach out to him and see if you can listen to their band. They're really amazing. Also, last night, I got to watch Longleaf Elementary School's kindergarten winter performance. I wanted to thank Mr. Vince for fostering the love of the arts in his students, and I wanted to thank Mrs. Soash for inviting me. It was their first performance since last Christmas, and it was so wonderful to hear Mr. Vince singing the praises of his students. And I also wanted to thank Mr. Browning and staff for allowing these events to safely occur outside. I know that our students really, really have missed them. And lastly, I know that I said this earlier, but we only have three more days, teachers and staff. You got this, and then you'll have a much-needed break, so please rest, stay healthy, and be safe during the holidays. I really appreciate you.
Ms. Crumley?
Okay. I cycled over to the Starkey K8 school that is going up. It is incredible, and if you haven't yet seen that, it's unbelievable. It's so unbelievable. My son-in-law and daughter are trying to move to that area so they can get their baby, who's only one, in that school because it's just beautiful. Okay. And also only to reiterate what everyone else has been saying, my appreciation for our principals, teachers, staff, students, and parents, all whom have been on overload, as we all well know. Also, appreciation for our community partners that have provided extra food, clothes, gifts, money when necessary, to our families, and to our healthcare workers who have been on overload. Just thanks to everyone, and happy holidays to all, and buh-bye, 2020 soon.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, anything?
Not right this time, nobody.
All right. Mr. Alfonso, any board attorney?
No, sir.
All right. So we move to non-agenda item, public comments. I'll let the attorney again give quick instructions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the opportunity for the public to be heard on general topics of relevance to the operation of Pasco County schools. To speak at this time, you should have already given your name to a staff member at the lobby.